And welcome to tonight's Bennington Select Board Meeting. It's Monday, August 28th. We're on the third floor of the fire facility. And I am Jeannie Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I'm going to ask my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Gary.
I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening, I'm Joe Carroll.
Hi, Tom Haley.
I'm Jeanne Connor.
Evening, I'm Ed Woods.
Thank you all. And also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, our Town Manager. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent meeting minutes every meeting. We have Jonas Spivak, making sure that our presentations go smoothly. And for very much. So let's start tonight, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you, Jim. Tom, would you read the Town Vision Statement, which guides all our work?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. And now, before we go on to the consent agenda, Jim has requested to have one or two minutes to address us tonight.
Yes, thank you. At last, our last Select Board meeting, I made a reference to Sarah Perrin, and it was offensive, patronizing, and stupid. I apologized personally to Sarah and said that I would make a public apology. She said she didn't feel that was necessary, but I did, and I do. So I'm apologizing to my fellow board members and the people of Bennington as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate you doing that. Now, on to the consent agenda. So we have the minutes of August 14th, we have the warrants, and we have a new liquor license that just came in for the Putnam Block Hospitality OZ LLC, which is really Union Station, Union South, the restaurant. And so they are applying for a liquor license, which means they must be getting closer to opening.
They're talking days now.
Really? Exciting.
That's what I was told.
Okay, so we have the, we have all the paperwork here, so if anyone wants to look at that, you're welcome to do that. So for the purposes of discussion, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So who?
Second? Second? Thank you. Any discussion?
I have two questions for Mr. Hurd, if I could.
Yes.
On the warrants, there is a payment to Doxy Roofing for a repair on the town office roof. Stu, I'm hoping that's just a repair, and it's resolved, and it's not serious?
Yes. If it's on the town office, it's probably slate repair.
I'm familiar.
Me too.
Slate. And then a payment marked "Two Industrial Refrigerators" to Hollister, where they knew were repairs?
I'm sorry, one more time, Ed, please.
Hollister Appliance marked "Industrial Refrigerators."
Those are for the fire facility. We're replacing the current equipment, and by actually moving to more energy-efficient refrigerators, we're able to do away with an older freezer, stand-up freezer, that will actually be much more efficient than what we have.
Thank you.
Great. So I have a question on page two. Can you just, we have some charges for trash at MAU.
Any trash that Mount Anthony brings to the transfer station, we are reimbursed by them. So those would be billed out.
Okay.
So it's a receivable also.
Okay, okay, great. And then, I just had one, one thing on, or two things, actually, on the minutes, Nancy. Rhonda Mackey is actually Martha Mackey, and it's M-A-C-K-E-Y. Did you already get that?
Uh, well, sort of.
Okay, it's 229, okay, 229 and 231 lines. And then, and then just on page 10, line 333, Ms. Perrin, it says Ms. Perrin would like to send out a reminder of the openings to those that had previously applied. She, I think what she actually did was ask that a reminder be sent out, and it has been.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any? Oh, no. What is that?
Amstetians.
Amstetians, thank you. Oh, my gosh, I'm writing it down. All right. Thank, all right, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to public comment. We have, first up, Scott Davis, to talk about e-bikes. So please introduce yourself, and yeah.
Scott Davis, Bennington, Vermont. I would like to comment on e-bikes. I know many people get their feathers in a ruffle when they see no motorized vehicles, and then they see an e-bike. E-bikes, depending on the class, are defined by federal law as a bicycle. This policy change was a big to-do in the e-bike community when the federal government made this distinction a few years ago. Policies, they changed laws and policies on a national level for national parks, national forests, national seashores, and the brewer of land management. All may changes allowing for use of e-bikes on paved areas and anywhere a bicycle was previously allowed. This also prompted laws to be changed in regards to e-bikes in areas which prior to were very unfriendly to e-bike usage, namely like New York City. It was a very big deal when New York State changed its e-bike laws, taking precedent from the federal change. If you read the Vermont DMV laws at the legislatorvermont.gov, the very first section of the law is titled, Title 23, VSA subsection 1136A, states that electric bicycles shall be governed as bicycles under Vermont law, and operators of electric bicycles shall be subject to all the rights and duties applicable to bicycles under Vermont law. E-bikes are relatively new, but in just the last few years, I have seen the use of them spread. I might have seen one person using an e-bike three years ago. Today, it's common sight to see someone utilizing, wanting to travel to work, do their shopping, or just get around town. The e-bike riders I have seen are not acting negligently. The subject of e-bikes came up briefly at the last, at a recent Select Board meeting in regards to the Riverwalk. It was a brief, but enough to be possibly added to the motion being discussed. I'd like to say that the Select Board, even though Vermont law provides stipulations for the Select Board to make laws and policies regarding e-bike use on multi-use paths, I would urge the town to not consider, to consider an alternative, an alternative to outright banning them, the use of them on the multi-use paths. I would rather see posted speed limits of all bicycles and e-bike users and adoption of a set of multi-use path rules adequate for signaling and right-of-way. All users would need to abide by these rules when on the multi-use paths. The rule should be beyond signage at the access points, perhaps something like, by using the multi-use path, you agree to the following rules, make these rules ticketable and enforceable. From my own riding experience, I would suggest a speed limit about 15 miles an hour maximum. A leisurely laid-back bike speed is about 12 miles an hour, and under 10, one might be struggling to keep the bicycle upright and moving forward safely. In regards to signaling, I'd suggest the use of both bike bells and on your left. Cyclists would ding-ding and audibly announce their passing of pedestrians on your left. There are many of us with disabilities, including myself. The use of an e-bike is a way to get out, and use of an e-bike could be considered a reasonable accommodation under the American Disability Act. And rather than face a possible future lawsuit to the town on that front, I would suggest to this Select Board to make an inclusive policy for the multi-use pass to regulate the speed right-of-way and signaling for use. In addition, I'd like to ask in regards to the rail trail, if it is possible for the town to go through a similar grant process like they did for the Riverwalk, and possibly add some lighting. I don't know how that works, but I would say, I would like to say, whatever the Select Board decides, bicycles and e-bikes are a nice way to get around our community. It's a very nice, as a cyclist, e-cyclist, to get away from the automobile traffic on busier roads by utilizing the multi-use pass. I would encourage anyone who doesn't realize how much safety the multi-use pass add to cycle, to cycle from Four Corners to Walmart using North Street or North Side Drive and navigate the traffic circle, or continue up the flats to do shopping at Hannaford's. If you think the rides at the fair can give you a thrill, they have nothing on that ride. I love the strides that Bennington is taking to add these assets to our community and make pedestrians and bicycle travel safer for everyone. I sincerely hope this type of growth continues for Bennington. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sam Rusino, to talk about agenda items.
Good evening, Sam Rusino, Bennington, Vermont. Yes, the agenda. We've gone from a lengthy agenda from the October, August 14th meeting, to a two-and-a-half-hour meeting, to this meeting, which was a vague agenda, and approximately an hour and a half. I find items that really need to be talked about, which I'll update, because Town Managers report we're not allowed to comment, from what I've heard on the last meeting, but I'll comment here. CTC and EPA, EPA meeting was supposed to be, held a meeting in August from a conversation with Town Manager Stu Hurd. That's on them. We have to wait until they gather information and a presentation about the charge site with PCBs. As far as the CTC, it's a costly issue. I'm talking about the property where we had the fire two years ago on Benmont Avenue. That is another costly deliberation that we have to go through as far as satisfying that property. The skate park, we haven't heard conversation on that. Great presentation. I surely thought that would be an agenda item forthcoming in the last few weeks. Ben High, we haven't heard anything about that since June. I thought there'd be more information on that, considering the property on the corner of Main Street and Pleasant Street was sold. We're on verge of losing another business on North Side Drive, and it's bittersweet. And I ask my Select Board members, don't wait for business to come forth and say, well, maybe they'll ask for help. I urge our Select Board members to go out to the general public and ask the discussion. How's your business doing? And if they say, okay, no, seriously, how are you doing? We want to keep business here in Bennington, not lose it. And if we're waiting for business to come forth and ask our town fathers for help, that's not a way to conduct business in Bennington, in my opinion. We've got to help businesses and encourage them to come forth, and maybe we can help with upcoming loans or other avenues of...
Sam, you're at 30 seconds.
Yes, thank you. And when we get to, on the site, it's on the web. Well, we're an Asian community. A lot of people are not savvy on the web, and they don't have capability of going to the Bennington Free Library to read the packets. So we got to get the information out there about the packet. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Sharon Step.
I'll put my timer on. Three minutes. It's my first time doing this. Okay. Sharon Step, I live on South Stream Road in Bennington. Been there 43 years. I actually grew up on Beach Street, so I know that whole area of stop signs and traffic and all the above. And over the years, they put several stop signs out there. There's one at Gore Road, South Stream, Morgan Street. I'm a runner, and I live near this lady here, too. She wants to speak in a moment. And the traffic is very, very erratic. I'm sure the people who have fast cars love that corner there. It's right by the ice pond. It's a half, and it's right by the Beach Street School. Well, it used to be the Beach Street School, you know, just a little past that. And I don't know how to slow them down, and there's been many accidents there in the last couple of years, too. I know people like to drive fast. It's boring driving through there. So my point is, I guess, I'm trying to understand how your process works. Is this something that we could look into getting on an agenda item? They have put 25 mile-an-hour, the square signs, which I guess are recommended, right? People don't have to adhere to that. But it comes 35, it comes 30 down Beach Street. As soon as you turn right onto South Stream Road, it goes to 35. And then there is a recommended sign to do 25. I never understood why that was 35 through there, because the school was there, and there was a school there many, many years. And they're still bringing some kids in there. I believe they're taking them from some of the other schools that have some issues, and they bring them in there. So I see the bus going and out of there a lot. And then it turns to the 25 recommended, and then it goes back to 35. And I live just about a half a mile past that, before the Morgan Street intersection. And I'm up off the road. I'm okay. My friend is not. She's close to the road. But I do hear them, and they're in my ditch a lot, too, you know, throughout the winter. The cars do go in there. So, I'm sorry, I'm looking at my time here. Okay. So I just was wondering, is that something, I know you can get a policeman to go by once in a while. That doesn't necessarily work. Once in a while, we do have a policeman there. I do this with people trying to drive by. There's a lot of bikers, too, not just me as a runner, many runners, walkers, bikers. Soon as I get to that sidewalk, though, it's great, you know, because then I know I'm safe. But I just was wondering, is that something that can be looked into for another option? I have a couple ideas, but it would probably have to go to Agenda, right, before I could give you my ideas.
Stu, is that more appropriate for Sharon to sit down with you?
If you have some ideas about how to slow traffic, send them to me.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we can take them up with the Police Department. We are aware of the speeding problems on South Stream Road.
Yeah.
And we have attempted to address them over the years.
I know.
We can't have a police officer there all the time.
No, no, absolutely, no.
But, yes, please, send me your ideas.
Okay. And then just let Glow come. Thank you very much. Thank you. Glow, did you, Glow, would you like to speak?
Glow Harris, South Stream Road. I can reiterate what Sharon said. I won't do that for time reasons. I live very close to the street. I am on South Stream Road, as I just said, excuse me. And I was outside doing some garden work la, I guess it was week before last, and a speeding car went by that left me shaking. And I called the Police Department. A police person came and spoke to me and suggested that I come here. I'm now here, speaking, and I want to live a full life. That person could have harmed me. It's no joke. My friend that lives on the same side of the street as I live on, a fellow was working on her truck. She and I spoke. She was supposed to be here tonight, but she had another engagement. And he said that this car was probably going 60 or 70 miles an hour. I also have taken note of the automobiles, and I will, I will accordingly convey that to somebody that I'm looking at right now. But it's not okay. It's just not okay. I'm a grandparent. I am a mother, obviously, and I actually walk a dog. I have a dog that is a city dog, and I walk a dog. I am very mannerly about moving away from traffic. It's a very lovely area, but there can be that one or two or three person that will make you shake in your boots. It's not okay.
So maybe what we can do, if you guys have suggestions, please send them to Stu. Maybe we can circle back. You know, we've had some conversations about South Stream Road informally, and know that it is a problem area. We wish we could extend sidewalks everywhere. That would be wonderful, wouldn't it? But that will take a very long time, and, yeah. So it does feel like it's something that, that we are, we are concerned about. We want you to be able to enjoy your neighborhood and get out and walk, and not feel like you're taking your life in your hands when you garden. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I mean, I have other notes here, but for time reasons, I'm just not going to go into it. I think that we're all intelligent people, looking at each other right now, and we have to act intelligently. If we can help other people that have problems in this world and provide them with extended life circumstances, we need to extend the life of healthy people, healthy citizens. And I like to speak to people. I'm very friendly, and I talk to people away from the road, obviously, but it's just, it's, it's very sad. It's very, very sad. And thank you for listening.
Thank you for bringing this to the Board. All right. Thank you. Those were enlightening comments tonight. All right, so next up is Jack Rosider-Munley from ECDC, and I will let him talk about, I will let him share what ECDC stands for, because I'm sure it's part of his presentation. And, and welcome, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much for having me, and thank you for everybody who braved the weather to be here today, and obviously, of course, everyone watching at home on Cat TV. That's why we have these wonderful visual aids. So, yeah, I am here. I work for ECDC, which is the Ethiopian Community Development Council, and that is one of the 10 refugee resettlement agencies that operates throughout the United States. And they are the agency that works here in southern Vermont, with offices over in Brattleboro, and as of the beginning of this year, an office here in Bennington. So before I get into the work that ECDC does in more detail, I want to talk a little bit about what it means for someone to be a refugee, because this is a term with a distinct meaning, and I think sometimes terms around either displaced peoples or people who are moving throughout the world can be used interchangeably. And it's really important, there are two big things to understand about anyone who has refugee status, which is that they were someone who was forced to leave their country involuntarily, and they are someone who has gone through a very lengthy international process before ever coming to the United States. So first step for someone to be designated as a refugee is they have to have been forced to leave their country because of the threat of war, persecution, or violence. And they need to have gone through a process that began shortly after they left that country to be designated as a refugee by the United Nations. That process involves security and background check interviews, essentially to confirm their story about why they faced violence and threatened their country. And then a second round of security interviews happens once their country that they will be resettled to is decided, because there are different sets of security interviews and requirements for different countries. So anyone who is coming to the United States as a refugee, and anyone that our organization works with will be coming as a refugee, has already gone through this lengthy international process before ever setting foot in the United States. And they are someone who is leaving their country through no fault of their own, and likely against their will and against their wishes, but because they would be in mortal danger if they remained. And so refugee resettlement is something that has been happening here in Bennington. So people who have been forced to leave their countries, who have gone through these processes, have been coming to Bennington for a little over two years now. So the first people who came to Bennington as refugees came in 2001, and the resettlement effort has been supported by ECDC, but there has also been a group of volunteers locally, Bennington County Open Arms, who many people, if you're aware of refugee resettlement, you've probably heard that name, and they are the volunteers who really made resettlement in Bennington possible in the sort of gap period between when ECDC opened its office in Brattleboro, but did not yet have as much of a presence here in Bennington. So refugees have been coming to Bennington since 2021. The ECDC, well, first, Bennington was designated as a separate resettlement site in October of 2022. The ECDC office, still a temporary office space that we're in now, opened in February of 2023. And what we've been calling direct resettlement began in July of this year, so very, very recently, is when people actually began coming directly to Bennington. So the previous process had been that they were coming to Brattleboro and then coming to Bennington. Now, the process is that people fly into JFK. They are usually brought by ground transportation over to Hartford, and then an ECDC staff person will bring them from the Hartford Airport to their housing here in Bennington. And our office does a lot of different work here in the Bennington community to help people as they are acclimating to life here in Bennington and in the United States generally. A little bit about the numbers, just since July, we have had 14 people who have come to Bennington. Two have since left to be close to friends and family who are down in Virginia. And we know of seven more people, a family of six who are arriving tomorrow evening, which is most of what my day has been about today, is getting ready for that, and then a single person who will be coming in early September. Almost everyone who has come to Bennington so far has been Afghan. The people who came in 2021 and were coming through Brattleboro were all Afghan, and almost everyone, as you can see here, who has come since direct resettlement began, have been Afghan. But we are beginning to see people come from the Democratic Republic of Congo, and we expect more people to come, mainly from Afghanistan, but as a Congolese community begins to grow here in Bennington, we expect to see more people from Democratic Republic of Congo, where there is intense need, and there is, sort of nationally, there have been a lot of numbers coming up of people being resettled who have been displaced out of the Democratic Republic of Congo. So what does ECDC do? Now, very quickly, before I get into some of this, I want to mention that we are the Refugee Resettlement Agency. We're sort of the professional arm of resettlement that happens here. There are 10 of these nonprofits that operate throughout the country and are contracted directly with the State Department and the Department of Health and Human Services to run official programs that help people get resettled. But resettlement is a community effort. It cannot happen without a community that finds ways to step up and help people who are coming into that community feel welcomed and have a home. So as much as I'm going to be focusing on and talking about some of the work that we do, which includes community outreach, I also want to make sure to give lots of credit to the volunteers and community members who have, throughout the resettlement process for the last two years, and especially in the last two months, have consistently stepped up to make resettlement possible. So what we do, a lot of the work that the Resettlement Agency does happens in the first 90 days. There's a program called Reception and Placement, which is intensive case management and a lot of adjustment to a new community, and that's a big focus of what the Resettlement Agency does. And it covers a lot of different things, but it is mainly focused on making sure people have a warm welcome, have a safe place to stay, and are on a path towards independence and ability to navigate the community and feel comfortable and at home. So that begins at the airport, literally at the airport. An ECDC staff person, sometimes accompanied by a volunteer, will be there at the airport to greet a new family and bring them to their permanent housing, which leads to the next point. Before someone arrives here in the United States, we work very hard to identify safe and affordable housing for that family. And that involves not only finding the housing itself, but working with the community, and this is what I've spent most of today doing, to bring in home furnishings and to set up the apartment so that it is ready when someone arrives. Part of what is also included in setting up the apartment is making sure that there is a decent amount of culturally appropriate food in the pantry and a culturally appropriate warm meal waiting for them when they step in the door. We always make sure that that happens, so that someone who is coming after what is, in many cases, the longest and most difficult journey of their life, often one to two days of airplane travel that began thousands and thousands of miles away, either on an army base or in a refugee camp, and does not end until they walk in the door of their apartment here in Bennington, that whether they're ready to eat right then, or they want to eat after they take restorative sleep, that it is, they're ready and waiting for them so that they feel welcomed. Once people are getting settled, we help them sign up for the state services that are relevant to them. We assist them in beginning to look for jobs that match their skills, because one of the really exciting things about refugee resettlement is that there are people coming from all around the world with a vast variety of talents... from all around the world with a vast variety of talents and skills, and in many cases, people who have had whole careers. So here in Bennington, we have people who were training to be doctors and lawyers in their home countries. We have people who have long careers as international business people. We have people who have been skilled carpenters and tradespeople. We have people who have been, you know, cooks and bakers, whether that's formally through employment or through a lifetime of cooking and baking for a large family. And we have a lot of people who are really eager to begin working for the first time, whether that's women who haven't worked outside the home for the first time but are excited at the opportunity of doing so, or young people who are in their late teens or early twenties and haven't had jobs before but are excited about beginning to work outside the home and become more independent as they adjust to life here in the United States. So really working with families to help them match their skills to the jobs that are available here. And so that involves working with the Department of Labor. It also involves making connections with employers throughout the community and also working so that those gifts and talents are not, are able to be accessed even when there are sometimes barriers around language, which is a big focus of our work. We also then make sure that people have access to education. Language can be a barrier. There has been a significant number of people here in Bennington who are not, came to the United States not only preliterate in English, but preliterate in their own home languages. So no background of reading, writing, or formal education at all. Many of those people have found employment that they are able to do, and we help connect them to English classes, volunteer supports around language learning, school enrollments. And for people who come with more of an education background and higher language skills who are interested in professional development, ECDC is pioneering a higher education partnership program, which is one of the first that has ever been undertaken by a resettlement agency to help connect those people with relevant higher education and to take some of the higher education they've already done, or professional degrees they have sought overseas, and figure out how to make those relevant and make those legible to employers here in the United States. So that's a really exciting program that has involved a number of different partnerships that are underway. But obviously, since we're here in Bennington, both for that program and generally working in the resettlement effort, we have had a lot of contact with and support from Bennington College, which has been really wonderful. So work with Bennington College is a great example of one of these community partnerships that we helped to create to support refugee resettlement. I will not be able to name everyone we work with, because one of the things about refugee resettlement is you're working with people. And people are so multifaceted that they end up having many different points of community connection through employment or education or any number of other things. But we work very closely with the Tutorial Center, who provide English language classes. We work closely with the Department of Labor and other state services, like economic services, because people who come to the United States, even those who were middle or upper-middle class in their home countries, come with very little. And so there is a need, certainly when people first arrive, and depending on the employment they're able to find potentially ongoing, to work with state services to make sure that they have immediate access to what they need. As I mentioned, Bennington College, volunteers from throughout the community. We've also had a partnership that has been ongoing and continually growing with the Bennington Free Library, which is a fantastic resource for someone who has arrived with very little, because it's free. And it has a whole world of information at your fingertips, both at the library building itself. But we have had people who've gone there to apply for jobs using the computers at the library, or who have found that even though they don't read English yet, they could check out an audiobook on their phone and listen to it so that they can hear the language. And we've worked with them to expand their language offerings generally. So that's just a few snapshots of our partnerships. There are many others, and we hope to grow even more over time. And through those partnerships, what we really strive to do is create systems and to hold events and promote activities that are not only relevant for our clients who come as refugees, but finding ways to mobilize the refugee resettlement process, to create systems, to create events that everyone in the community can benefit from. And I'll talk a little bit about some of those towards the end of this presentation. But the mindset that we bring to the work that we do is about the ways that not only can the community come together to support refugees, but as people who have come to the community as refugees become more active participants in the broader community, how can the entirety of the town become enriched through this process? And how can we, as the resettlement agency, help make that happen on a town-wide scale? And we have some projects in the works, again, as I said, I'll talk a little bit towards the end of this, that we're hoping start us down that path, now that also we, as the agency, having had our office here for a little bit longer, can start thinking more in the slightly longer term. I do want to highlight housing, because that is one of the biggest challenges for the work that we do, as it is one of the biggest challenges that faces the entire Bennington community. Finding safe, affordable housing is a top priority for many, many people in Bennington at many different income levels and many different life experience, who have had many different life experiences. But I wanted to illustrate a little bit of what I mean when I say that we identify safe and affordable housing and we help get it set up. So this is an example, this is in an apartment, Zach Hale is in the audience, this is one of the Community Resource Management apartments that we have worked to furnish and set people up in. But this is an example of what someone would be greeted with when they first arrive. So this is how the apartment was set up for the arrival of a couple, an Afghan couple, who came to Bennington in the month of August. So we provide kitchen tables, we provide a stocked pantry, we provide a full bedroom setup, and everything you're seeing in this picture was donated by volunteers from throughout the community. In the next picture, you will see some of the pantry that gets set up with culturally appropriate meals, food that was purchased at an Afghan grocery store over in the Albany area. And in the oven were the culturally appropriate hot meals that were there when they arrived. In the next picture, you'll see an example of how we set up the bedroom for these folks. And I wanted to make a particular point of this, because we received this really wonderful donation of quilts that were made. And if you can read the writing, it says, "Made for you with open hearts and loving hands by the Bread Loaf Mountain Zen Community 2023." And this was a project that this Zen community had undertaken, where they received donations of fabric from all around the world, turned them into quilts, and they brought us nine of these beautiful quilts. And you'll see how it is set up on the final bed. Every single one of these quilts was different. All of them had that message on it, and we were able to give them to many of the families who arrived here in Bennington. But again, this is an example of how we set up one of the bedroom spaces in these apartments. And in this next slide, you will see that this, if you point your phone at this, and that goes for everybody out on Cat TV, if you can see this and you can point your phone at it, you can open up a document that will give you the full list of all of the items that are on the official State Department list of the items that must be present in an apartment when someone arrives. And this is the donation list that we work off of. We also will occasionally send out a note about specific items that we know we need, because donations come in at a variable pace. And so sometimes we really need bed sheets, and sometimes we have enough bed sheets, and we really need bedside tables, or we need kitchen chairs, or we need kitchen tables. It fluctuates, but this list gives you a good overall sense of what is needed. And at the bottom of this list, what you will find is the items that are not required, but which we like to provide if we can. Things like irons and ironing boards, pressure cookers, items that we know, because we've talked to families after they've arrived, that are not required, but are often daily use type of items. And whenever we can provide more than the required list, we try and do that. In the next slide, you will see the link that you can go to to make donations. So again, if you point your phone at this, it will take you directly to our online giving platform, which is called Give Butter. And if we receive donations, it means that we can purchase items, because there are certain items that cannot be donated secondhand. And this is very important, and this is a major point that I think is crucial for an area where community engagement and activity can be really helpful. So items that cannot be purchased, cannot be donated and must be purchased new, if they are not either purchased by someone who is then donating them as a new item, would have to come out of the finite amount of welcome money, it's called, that everyone who comes to the United States comes with. And that is $1,075 per person. And that money is really intended to help cover housing costs and to help buy food in the interim when someone is looking for their first employment. And you can imagine, that is $1,075 per person, per case. So if a single person comes to the United States, they have $1,075 to try and pay for rent, to try and buy food, and to try and buy all of the other necessities they might have until they start working. If two people come, they only get two times that amount of money, again, to pay for housing, to pay for food, and to pay for other life necessities. So if something like a mattress, or a pillow, or a bed frame has to come out of that finite amount of money, they're starting with even less. So what we've been doing here in Bennington, we're calling it the Bennington Mattress Squad. And we're gathering a list of people who we can send a notification out to when we know that there's someone who's arriving. And we will say, we need this many mattresses, and this many bed frames, and this many pillows. And if people can step up and make those donations, so rather than donating items secondhand, if you're able to purchase those items, and we do have models that we recommend for purchase, so that there's equity amongst the folks who are coming, we really appreciate people who are able to do that. So if anyone is interested in becoming part of that sort of email list, my contact information will be at the end of this presentation, and you can just send me an email about that. But the other thing that can happen is you can just donate money. And then that money can go towards purchasing welcome meals, purchasing food. We can tell somebody who's already going to Albany, hey, here's a certain amount of money that can go towards buying food for the family who's coming. But it could also go towards the purchases of mattresses and other items that can't be brought in through donations. So I do want to, before we wrap up, talk a little bit about the work that goes beyond just the sort of necessities of life, but the ways that we have already begun working within the community, sharing information, and letting people who have come here as refugees become sort of the leading voices around the resettlement effort. I know I'm here tonight, but this is, these are images from an event that we had at the library at the end of April called Stories From Around the World, which was a chance for people from the refugee community to share some about their experiences, both before coming to Bennington, but also since they arrived here. And it was a chance to also talk a little bit about, and answer questions from the community about Afghan culture, and to also share some Afghan food. Members of the Afghan community cooked and baked and made the food for this event, which was beautiful. And even though it was a lot of food, very little was gone by the end of the event. It was also a chance to highlight some of the work that the library has been doing, going above and beyond, to really think creatively about how best to serve people who have come as refugees. So early on, the library reached out to and got a small grant, and was able to translate some of their most popular children's titles on their own into Dari, in addition to purchasing items that were available in both languages. Dari is the most commonly spoken language in Afghanistan, along with Pashto. Until very recently, everyone here in Bennington were Dari-speaking people from Afghanistan. The library also became one of the first libraries to host what is called the Welcoming Library Connection Collection, which is a collection of award-winning children's books about different cultures and different experiences from around the world. That collection came to the library, we were able to highlight it during this program. And because it was here, it's a traveling collection, the library was able to see which titles from that collection were particularly popular and add them to their own collection over time. We also had, you'll see these two paintings in the background, those are paintings that were done by members of a group called the Afghan Art Lords. Members of that group have resettled in Brattleboro, and that is a group of artists, international group of artists, begun in Afghanistan, who did mural work in Kabul, murals in opposition to the Taliban and in support of peace and international peace efforts. And members of that group sent a couple of their pieces over here, they have exhibited some of their pieces, and we're hoping to find more ways to bring their talents over to Bennington as well. Something else that we did with the library was, we worked with them on their summer reading program this year. And in the next slide, you'll see some of how we did that, which is through... Well, we worked with them to make language learning part of their summer reading program. And they had weekly language learning challenges, and anyone who came and spoke with a librarian in a language that was new to them, or wrote on a piece of paper and talked with a librarian about what they wrote in a language that was new to them, which would include people who were learning English, that counted towards summer reading credit for both children and adults. And in talking with the library, that was a really popular addition to their summer reading program, and it was something that led to them seeing more of their language learning materials getting checked out. And they said there were a lot of people who were really excited about the week-to-week challenges. So one week might be, how do you say hello, how are you? One week might be about saying different colors. One week was about saying goodbye. And by incorporating all of that, there were people who would come in one week and then talk about doing the next week's challenge in a different language. And so that was a really kind of fun thing to hear about from them. And we've been consistently working with them on thinking about different ways. Again, that's a program where some of the people who participated were our clients, but it was a chance to bring something new and different to the library's summer reading program, and do that in a way that helped serve a lot of people, who might be learning any number of new languages. It could be someone who's a Spanish speaker who's learning English, or a kid who's learning French, anybody, just opening up the library in more different ways. I guess we can skip the duplicate slide, and then the, if you want to get involved with any of this, you are welcome to contact me. This is my information. And the work that I do is basically helping connect more, more people throughout the community to help refugees as they are getting set up in new lives here in the United States. And I can say, obviously, the directory settlement effort here is new, but my involvement with this started a little over a year ago, when I started as a volunteer working in the English language learning classes. And the strides that people have made in all realms of their lives, but I, my window, the biggest window I have had is into the language learning element. And just earlier today, I met with somebody, he wanted to meet with me just to go over how to pay his electric bill on the phone. But this is somebody who, when I first worked with him last year, he's somebody who was preliterate in Dari, did not read or write in Dari, was preliterate in English, didn't read or write in English. And for our appointment this morning, he called me yesterday and made the appointment on the phone with me in English. And then we met today, and in English, I was able to help him fill out the information. And he knew all of the different numbers and letters to put in his email address, and to go through the automated menu when we called Green Mountain Power, to put in his card information. He is still not somebody who would be fluent, and I think many people would still see him struggling in some ways with language. But the amount that he has grown while also navigating so many other parts of a new life in the United States. In this time, he has also gotten his permit and his driver's license, he has started full-time employment and helped contribute to his family, paying things like the electric bill and the rent. And he has still found a way to learn more English, even while having a speech impediment and clearly struggling with language in a way that some other members of his family haven't. That's the kind of stuff that you get to see all the time, and that's the sort of thing that even somebody who's really struggling in an area like language, when you reflect on where they started and where they are now, it's a vast improvement and difference. And that's to say nothing of the people who are coming here fluent in four or more languages with backgrounds as international business people. So the different ways that refugee resettlement happens are as different as the people who come to Bennington. And we've already welcomed, there were about 30 people who had come already, there have been 14 more who have come, and we already know about seven more, and there will be more people coming. And every single one of those numbers is a full human being, anywhere from the ages of two to their mid-50s. And they bring a lot to this community, and it has been really heartening to see the ways the community has stepped up to help them on that journey. And I appreciate having this chance to give, I'm usually here in public comment, giving little snapshots, but I'm really grateful for the opportunity to give sort of a fuller picture. And I would love to hear any questions from the board or from people who are here about the resettlement process.
Great, Jack. Thank you. That was really fantastic. Anyone on the board have a question, a comment?
I just have one question, Jack. Ethiopian Community Resettlement Council, where does the Ethiopian come from?
It comes from 40 years ago when it was founded. And it started off mainly serving people who, at that time, were coming as Ethiopian refugees in 1983. And since then, it has become one of the resettlement agencies that works sort of with everybody. So there are, amongst those 10 resettlement agencies, there are other ones who similarly have names that hearken back to their origins. have names that hearken back to their origins, but all of those agencies work with people from all around the world. And in fact, I am told that very soon, the acronym is not going to change, it's going to remain ECDC, but it will stand for something different to help clarify that.
Do you still see Ethiopian refugees?
There are, they are not currently coming here to Bennington yet, but there are people here in Southern Vermont who have come as Eritrean or Ethiopian refugees. And I was just recently, last week in fact, I was at the ECDC National Conference, and there are people there. One of the points of pride in ECDC is that it is a refugee-led resettlement agency, and so it was founded by, and many of the people who are in the sort of executive positions at the ECDC headquarters were themselves people who came as either immigrants or refugees. And amongst that population, part of because of how it started, many of those folks are Ethiopian.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Yes, you have a question?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Actually, I have a question, and just a couple comments. When I met with, at the library, you know, I think we forget, these people, they're, I'm sure they're grateful to be here, but they don't really want to be here. They wish that they were back in their home country. So I think that's just something really important to be, to remember. These people are traumatized, and when you were speaking about how much progress this young man has made, that's on top of, or despite, the situation that I'm sure he fled. It's amazing what he's accomplished under the best of circumstances, but the fact that he's accomplished what he's accomplished, coming from so much trauma, is mind-boggling to me. Let's see. Do the refugees that you've gotten to know, do they consider that the United States is their permanent home, or do they hold out hope that they someday will go back to Afghanistan?
That's an interesting, it's a complicated question. So first, on your comment, many of the people who are here have fled because they would be in mortal danger in Afghanistan, and many of them have friends and family who are still there and who are in fact in mortal danger, and that is a huge aspect of their lives, not only from the stress and the worry about them, but also because in a lot of cases, they are financially supporting those people so that they can stay in effective hiding. And that is a major source of concern, both, you know, conceptual and very real when it comes time to pay the rent, but you also have to send a certain amount home to Afghanistan to keep your family members safe. It's very true, the trauma is a big part of it, and the ongoing stresses of having friends and family in danger. I think, again, the people who come here are all very different, and I think they have very different attitudes about life in the United States or life in Vermont. As I mentioned, actually, the first couple who were ever directly resettled in Bennington, it turned out they had a lot of friends and family in Virginia. And so as much as they are thinking about the United States and Afghanistan, they very quickly were thinking, well, my friends and family are in Virginia. It wasn't any comment on Bennington, most of, they, the people in Bennington, they consistently praised as being incredibly generous, and it was amazing to them the ways that people were helping them out, but they wanted to be with their friends and family in Virginia. So however much of a permanent life they see for themselves in the United States, it was one in Virginia. I think it varies from person to person. The situation with people who came from Afghanistan is very particular because in a lot of cases, the way that international resettlement works is someone might be in a camp for years before they're resettled. So there is a period of, an extended period of waiting and then starting a new life, whereas for people from Afghanistan, their lives collapsed very quickly, and they were almost immediately then beginning a new life in a new place. And I think there's a sort of different psychological experience in that, but there's also just been a different lived experience in terms of deciding how permanent is this new situation? What's happening? How long does it take someone to begin adjusting? I think it's just a very sort of particular experience they've had. Some people, yes, probably see the United States as their permanent or long-term home, and even those who may hope to return someday are pretty clear-eyed about what the current situation is in Afghanistan and understand they might be here in the United States for a long time.
And they might not even be able to think that far ahead.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, it's probably just not even possible to think beyond maybe a week.
Yeah. Certainly, when people first arrive, there's a lot of immediate needs, but it's also, you know, how far ahead can you actually think?
Well, something, it's something none of us have experienced for sure, I'd be willing to bet, so it's, we have a lot to learn about what they're experiencing.
And I will say, I've also, I've had conversations with people within a week of getting here who tell me about the jobs they hope that they get and the businesses they want to eventually start, and they very quickly and very clearly have a plan for themselves in the United States that involves five or 10 years down the road what they know they want to be doing, and they don't necessarily yet know all the steps to get there, but I want to open an Afghan clothing store, I want to, you know, I don't know what business it will be, but once I save this certain amount of money I've decided is the amount that would be about right, that's when I'll figure out which business I should start, but I need to learn about what businesses are going to be good in the United States kind of conversations. So it is a very wide spectrum.
Great. Any other questions from the board? No? Any questions in the community?
Well, if you think of any.
Yep.
That's where to send them.
We got it. Thank you so much, Jack. This was really, really wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to the manager's report.
Thank you. Just one action item for you tonight. The Vermont League of Cities and Towns Annual Meeting is coming up, I believe it's September 26th, in Burlington or South Burlington this year. Every year, you appoint me as the delegate for the annual meeting, wherein the league develops its legislative policies for the coming year. I'm looking for a motion from you to appoint me, the manager, to be your voting delegate.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no or abstentions? None?
And then I have two other items that essentially have sort of come late in the day. The first is, over the last, I'd say several months, the staff working with and through Jonah, as our communications coordinator, has been reviewing the International Association of Chiefless Police Plan and the recommendations there attached. There were some 20, I think it's 24, 25 recommendations that were made. Several of those are in one unit. It works out to be about 33 tasks that the town was asked to consider. We have finally put together a report, an update on our efforts in that regard. We recognize this is a work in progress, it's a continuum that will go on beyond the release of this report, but the town has made substantial progress on all 33 tasks that were outlined, and we're going to be releasing that on our website tomorrow. I sent you all a very brief copy of what's there. We're going to have a little bit of an explanation of how it's to be used and how it's to be looked at, attached to it, but it'll be released tomorrow to the media and to the community. I appreciate Jonah's efforts on this. So often, those of us who are heavily involved don't necessarily have the time to spend going back and looking at these kinds of things, and I appreciate Jonah's efforts on this one. The second thing came extremely late today. The Better Bennington Corporation is prepared to be awarded a $25,000 grant from the Downtown Vibrancy Fund. It needs a letter of support from the Select Board, and unfortunately, I was at home when I received the email, so I don't have a printed copy to share with you, but it basically will indicate that the town is supporting the BBC in its efforts along the downtown program, the Main Street program. We support the $25,000 grant, and we will use it as, and look at it as support but not as supplement. So it will not supplant any of the funds that we are already providing, but it's in addition to. And I will have that letter printed and available at the office tomorrow if you folks agree to sign it this evening. It'll be ready for you tomorrow, and we ask that you come in and sign it for us.
And so she needs a majority of the board to sign in the affirmative?
We do need a majority, yes.
So I'm wondering if maybe, if, do people think they could stop by the office by Wednesday and sign on to that? Do we need a motion, or just, I think, just come by?
I mean, I would have been asking you to cert, to sign it tonight as your approval, so I don't think we need a motion to sign it.
Okay.
So Stu, will Beth have it upstairs?
Pardon me?
Will Beth have it?
Yes, we'll have it out at the, right at the top of stairs.
Okay, and so it could be anytime tomorrow?
Anytime tomorrow.
I mean, while you're open?
Anytime after 7:30 tomorrow.
Okay, okay, I'll be there.
So let's say by the close of Wednesday, by Wednesday 4:30?
I'd like to have it done tomorrow.
Can everyone stop by tomorrow?
I can.
Okay, all right, tomorrow by close.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Wonderful. Okay. All right, so upcoming agendas, Ben-Hi is on the agenda for, for next meeting, as is, there was a health impact assessment done by the Department of Health that was related to the Ben-Hi project, so Megan Harrington is willing to come and talk to us about that as well. So those are the only two things that I have for sure for the next meeting. Okay, yes, something else?
Just, we hope to have a skate park update either the end of September or the first meeting and after, so happy to be here with the folks that are parting with us in that project, so I just want to let people know that's in the works.
Okay, that's great, and I'm hoping that we can maybe have Margay Diamond come back in that second meeting in September and talk to us about housing and just give us a housing update, because by then, they will have finished knocking on doors for individuals that are living in the motels in the area. All right, other business. Gary?
Nothing.
Jim?
Nothing.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention, we usually announce this, and we didn't, and that's our bad. The Rec Center closes, as many of us know, every year for a few weeks for annual maintenance, and they're currently closed, and I believe the date they open is September 11th.
Thank you.
Good reminder, thank you. I have a couple of quick items. I was reminded today at home that today is the 45th anniversary of Bennington Project Independence. So for 45 years, BPI has been providing adult services in the Bennington community. So I thought that I would offer that information to the community. My wife happens to serve on that board. I'm reporting back to the Select Board that I'm attending a Rescue Squad Finance Department meeting, Finance Committee meeting this week. Still am uncovering what might be helpful in that area. And I received an email from a concerned resident of Benmont Avenue regarding traffic as it relates to turning left into, going north, turning left into the vegetable stand. I saw a video of somebody rear-rending somebody. I was asked to bring it to the board's attention. Could that be looked at as a, an area of additional signage safety, particularly during the summer when that vegetable stand, that very popular vegetable stand is open?
And again, is that, Stu, that should go directly to you? Yes, to, okay.
Stu, if it's appropriate, I'll forward you that email.
Great. All right. Well, with that, we have need an executive session this evening, both for personnel and for contracts. We do not anticipate making any decision when we come out. So with that, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. We'll hopefully see you in two weeks.